11, 2019, 1:30 meeting, Biloxi City Hall chambers. I need a motion to amend the agenda. Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavin. Any questions? All in favor? Six-zero. Motion carry. Ms. Lucy, the amendment.
To our consent agenda, we're adding item five N, resolution authorizing agreement with Biloxi Capital LLC to build and lease a public municipal pier.
Need a motion to amend it?
As amended.
Yeah.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavin. Any questions on amendment? All in favor? Six-zero. Motion carry. Mayor's report? No. No report. No. No departmental reports, council reports. Ms. Lawrence?
Yeah, we had a bad weekend as far as our Billfish tournament. We had 118 boats was here. Only 28, 28 fish. So we lost 90 boats because of the bad weather. You know, so instead of giving away two and a half to three million, they gave away about five, 600,000. But it just affected the city for them people not being there for another three or four days. So it was economically, but I mean, it just weather. You can't do anything about the weather. You got outside event, that's the problem you have. But I mean, it still turned out good and the people won. They had a good time being here, but we just lost so many of their boats. You're not going to take one of them $6 million boats out that eight, 10-foot seas. They're not doing that.
That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Ms. Newman? No report. Dr. Tisdale?
Yes, a couple of things. Do we have, I know periodically we clear the sidewalks on the north side of Highway 90. Have we started yet in West Biloxi roughly from the Bu- uh, Buena Vista, the Broadwater west to Edgewater? It's really up kind of high and I know we have a lot of tourists there and residents and folks that are disabled and wheelchairers.
It's our responsibility for sure and I think, I'm not sure as far as the west contract where we are, but we definitely look at it.
Okay, well, it's time, so.
Appreciate anything you can do there, Mr. Mayor.
The other thing, the, there was an economic development forum this morning, I think that was through Main Street. Is that accurate? I know I saw Mr. Felshere there. And I was there probably for an hour and if you wanted to know, or had an idea for a development project, this is the place to be. Particularly if you're going to do business in the city of Biloxi, they kind of walk through the process and pointed out your likely expenses and tax advantages you could take, take advantage of. City breaks to some degree. I didn't get there early, I bet you were there, Mr. Mayor. Did you give anybody any tax breaks? Before we got there? Anyway, it was, it was, I don't know, they might have had 50 or 60 people attending, first shot out of the box. I don't know that this has been done before and just very good opportunity for folks that were interested in doing something in Biloxi and I hope that could be continued every year as an annual event perhaps. Yes, anyway, great idea, good attendance, first shot out of the box. Good job, Mr. Felshere. Thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Glavin?
Yeah, I got a few things. First, a shout out to the seven and under Biloxi All-Stars. They took home the championship in Bay St. Louis, kicked a little butt, and they're on to Bayou View this weekend. By the way, the Guffport tied it five to five in the bottom of the fifth and those Biloxi boys came through and we had a walkout off single to win the game against Guffport. On some other stuff in Ward Six, I'm just, if I could get an update on a few of these projects from the administration, I don't have to get them today, but I just want to, for the record, I want to state some of them. Pelican Bayou Drainage, the Corana, Beinview properties. I know we put some drainage in, but I just want to update on if we've tied that in to shed that water off. The Mollpus Landing moat, if we have a plan for that. I just need to get an update. I'll be meeting with the adjoining neighborhood in a couple of weeks and I just want to make sure the information I have is accurate. Waters View, there was a request submitted to clear some of the debris out of a ditch. There were trees that were falling in the ditch and I can't remember, Mike, if we asked the county for assistance or if we were going to do that ourselves. I don't know if you recall that off of Brazier? Brazier and Waters View, there was some debris. Okay. Wetlands to get the trees that had fallen in. I mean, some sizable tree, dead trees had fallen in that ditch and I think we were going to ask Mr. Boudreaux if we could get some kind of variance to go in there, at least pull out those big trees that are damming up that ditch. It's not allowing it to drain. There's been a request for a caution light at Wells and Indian Drive and if I could ask the traffic committee to just do an assessment and see if they agree to, that maybe a caution light during school hours. Some of the parents have asked for us to do an assessment and if it doesn't warrant it, I can go back and just tell them we did the assessment and doesn't warrant it, but if it does, I just want to let them know. And then Taylor Oaks, I think I've already passed this along, but I just stated for the record, they're requesting some traffic deterrents and Taylor Oaks, I'll get with the HOA and pass some information along and I want to appreciate Biloxi Police Department. They forwarded some information to the HO, the homeowners association for creating a neighborhood watch program. The HOA is reviewing it and they may set up a meeting just to answer any questions, to make sure they're dotting their Ts and crossing their Is, so. And then, Mr. Creel, is there any update on LZ Place? I know there's phase three coming up and I don't know if that's, that's in the hopper or what? Okay. We can get an update after that, okay. And that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I have no report.
All right, and I just have one thing. Mr. Walt, just wanted to see if we can get Oscar in there to kind of do a little cleanup. I think I mentioned it to Jennifer a while back. We can just use a little cleanup and cut down the weeds and all that kind of stuff. Okay, that concludes my report. We're going to move on to the policy agenda, citizen comments. Total of 45 minutes, three minutes per person, which will be strictly enforced. Is there anyone on my left that would like to come up and speak? Anyone on my left? Yes, ma'am. Please, please sign in and give your name and address for the record.
My name is Sharon Pierce. I know you've heard me before. 437 Sailor Drive. I'm not going to complain today at all. What I'm going to talk about is Dr. Petrusy. I want to thank him for the years that I've had that beautiful, beautiful property behind me. I know it's going to come to an end and I just have really, we've really, the whole family has enjoyed that area back there. Just to look at it, the birds, the animals, the foxes. We got an owl back there, but I know it's going to change. So I wanted to thank him for the years. I know that he probably does have to develop this property and the only problem I have with it really is the planning, the cramming in of all these big houses, small houses, the big houses on the water, all of this together. And it's just crammed right in there. If he would have just placed high-end homes and they're among the trees and made a beautiful subdivision, I know that nobody would have said anything, but the way it's going to be, I guess we just have to accept it and go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I do hope that someone will tell Dr. Petrusy that I have appreciated that property, looking at it and enjoying it for all these years.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on my left?
Good afternoon. I'm Bob Pierce. I live at 437 Sailor Drive, immediately adjacent to the Petrusy property. Came to Biloxi in 1999 to 1995 to work at the Biloxi VA and needed a house in the area close to the VA. Bought the property on Sailor Drive from builder, Bill Gager, and it was my understanding that Dr. Petrusy had an agreement with Mr. Sailor to not develop his property until 2024. I believe the council has a copy of that letter. And when he did develop it, it was going to be residential development, not stores, apartments, condominiums, what this zoning is for now. And five-foot lot lines instead of a regular lot line like we have on Sailor Drive, I think it was 10 feet. So I'm here today to ask the council not to approve this rezoning measure. I think it would be a detriment to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to my, on my left? Ma'am, in the back? Ma'am in the back? Let's see, there you go, hi.
My name is Sherry Munter and I live at 433 Linda Drive and I would like to address the Biloxi subdivision, the Petrusy subdivision and how it will impact the quality of life and property values of existing homeowners. Infrastructure, streets and schools. Currently, Atkinson Road is a very busy thoroughfare, especially during morning and afternoon rush hours. With the addition of hundreds of vehicles on this narrow two-way street, this street will most certainly turn into gridlock. It's very difficult to understand how a proposed turning lane will have the desired effect of relieving the volume of traffic that will come. A more likely scenario will be the widening of Atkinson Road, which will mean additional inconvenience and costs to the taxpayers for this additional project. The schools, will Pops Ferry Elementary School have the capacity to absorb several hundred new students? Will the classrooms be overcrowded and the teachers overburdened? Will students be bused to other schools? The issue of trees and wetlands. Mitigation, the city of Biloxi currently lags behind in enforcing the existing regulations in the LDO regarding tree mitigation by developers. Since no efforts have been done towards tree mitigation, do we want to continue this futile effort? Parking. With 110 or 109 single-family homes, several multifamily dwellings and commercial development, there will be hundreds of vehicles in this confined area. Smaller lots covered from lot line to lot line with the dwelling leaves a little room for multiple vehicles such as boats, RVs and motorcycles. If you take a drive down Atkinson Road today, it shows you what it looks like when there are too many toys and they're parked in the front yards. So in conclusion, it's long been my belief that one of the main responsibilities of the city is the protection of all of its tax-paying citizens.
Ms. Munter, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you, ma'am.
It seems to me that we're not keeping up with all of our taxes.
Ma'am, can you sign in, please, for us? Sign in. Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Yes, sir.
My name is Dennis Steifel. I'm the project engineer and representing the applicant, Dr. Petrusy. And just, I did not want to go back and repeat everything that we discussed last week, but there were a couple of items that I'd like to clarify and get on the record. I had mentioned last week that we had a letter from Dr., I mean, from Ed Sailor to Dr. Petrusy confirming his support, not only his support for the project, but also his opinion that, that the project as designed complies with the gentleman's agreement and the deed restriction. And I'd like to add that to the record along with a couple of photographs of the River Ranch subdivision development in Lafayette that this is being somewhat modeled after. So I would like to add these two things to the record. And then, just briefly, I'd like to, to let you know that I'm available for other questions if you guys would like me to answer or address any issues that may, you may have throughout, for the rest, duration of the meeting. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Okay, I'm going to move over to my right. Anyone on my right? Yes, ma'am.
Hey, good afternoon, y'all. I'm Judy Abad. I'm a resident of Jordan Drive. I've been there since 2006 or 2007 and I, for one, I'm pretty excited about this development, if it could happen. I think it'll mean good things for Biloxi. Today, I went around and texted some of my neighbors there on Jordan Drive and I found no one who was opposed to it. I talked to Donnie Duron of Community Bank and Mr. Dick of Mississippi Power, Ashley Endress. There were several that were, you know, in favor or were not opposed. Certainly, none of those people said they were opposed. One person did say they would like more information on it. So not everyone is against it, just wanted to know.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Anyone else in the room? Okay.
Oh, it's a print. I think you guys know me by now. I'm Suzie Anpatac. I live at 429 Sailor Drive. I know you're tired of hearing the same things over and over and over. We've beaten this horse to death. I know that. However, I sent an email to all of you. I got it, I got a response from two and I just want to make sure that this goes in the record because I still feel it's very important that we vote against this. I have so many objections. I said, "Hi, y'all. I think there have been grave misunderstandings regarding the wishes of the residents around the planned project. We, the residents in the area, are objecting to the density of this project. We do not want the zoning changed. There is a precedent set for the north side of Atkinson Road. We need to maintain the character of this area." Here's another major objection. I asked which representation of the two plaits we've been shown is correct and Jerry Creel, and he can yay or nay it, told me that both were correct because it's a concept. Does this mean that if approved, everything can change? Is this going to be a battle for the next six to eight or eight to 10 years every time they want to change? That there, that they've said that this would project would last? I'm sorry, I threw in there something extra. But according to Merriam-Webster, the definition of concept, "Something conceived in the mind, a thought, a notion, an abstract or a generic idea generalized from a particular instance." We are not getting any concrete information from these plaits, in other words. This is extremely scary. Further, closing Bonneville Drive, adding an eight-foot fence and adding a turn lane on Atkinson Road will not make everything okay. There are other concerns such as sufficient capacity for sewage treatment plant. If you get near Melissa Drive and Atkinson Road, you can smell the objection. Is Pops Ferry Elementary able to handle an influx of students? Are they near capacity? What about the other schools? And back to the traffic. A turn lane may help a little bit, but it will not solve the problem of Atkinson Road being a two-lane street, not a highway. The bridge issue should be resolved before this is started. There are too many uncertainties so far and it too is a concept. So you can't, you can't possibly know exactly where this bridge is going to be. We might have to re-buying the property. By the way, this doesn't just impact our neighborhood, it affects all of the residents of Biloxi. I understand the need of a bigger tax base, but can't we, this be done with estate homes? We really don't want townhomes, condos and apartments to defile this beautiful part of the city. And only Walmart's going to win. They're going to increase their stranglehold. Now, Ms. Newman did respond to me and she wrote me a very nice, what this is going to happen, but she also didn't-
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Did I miss anyone in the audience? Did I miss anyone that would like to come up?
Paul Grimm, 424 Sailor. I guess this is our last chance to talk. You've heard all the arguments. But not once has Petrusy shown up to kind of give us some type of reassurance. Nobody has objected to him developing his property. It's the density and the problems with density that it brings. He's going to donate a little strip of land for a turn lane so you can all turn around, use our tax dollars, buy the rest of it to relieve our traffic problem. How very nice of you. When Steifel was given the opportunity last week to rebut what we had talked about, I believe it was Mr. Tisdale who had, said he had several questions he'd like answered, but he'd wait until the following, until we read adjourned. We never heard his questions nor did we ever hear the answers to them. We don't, we, we feel that a lot of this has been done behind closed doors. We don't know what's going on. We're given a piece of paper with the map on it, one you guys didn't even have last week because obviously it doesn't matter. It's a concept. It can change. I was in the restroom between meetings last week and someone in a suit who seemed to know chuckled and said, "Well, we all know something's going to get built there eventually, but that bridge isn't going to get started till 2025. So if we start this and we got six years of this and how many years of bridge work? Who knows?" I watched them build the Rain Bridge, two guys for three years. Rode that road every day, two guys. So you're asking us to put up with the construction? The dirt? The noise? For what, another 10 years? For what, a little added tax base? A little bit more than you get from nice homes over there? I've been in a lot of big cities that have continued to build and build and build. The congestion gets terrible. What also gets bad is the runoff. And you're going to put more concrete over there. Bad drainage. And there's going to be more runoff. Like the song said, pave paradise, put up a parking lot. Right? And that's what we're going to do.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. Nick Strahan, owner of Lamy Electric. Our address is 1088 Columbus Street over in Biloxi. Trying to make this short and sweet. First of all, I want to thank y'all for your service to your constituents in the city. Thank you to y'all for that. What I was wanting to bring up real quickly is I'm in the process, under contract right now to buy some land up on Shriners Boulevard. I think it's 13015 Shriners Boulevard, which is the location of the old T&amp;E Salvage. As you go north on Shriners, just right past where we stop on the left-hand side. It's been vacant for some time now. We're looking at moving Lamy Electric to that location. One of my biggest reservations on moving there is the flooding. I'm not sure if any of your, I know, I talked to Mr. Barrett about it the other day, so I know he's aware of it, but what I was wanting to ask is if there's some awareness of the flooding issues due to the size of the culvert going up underneath Shriners and if there's anything scheduled or planned in the future to alleviate the flooding issue in that area. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, did I miss anyone?
My name is Joe Batac, 429 Sailor. At the public meeting last week, two people stood up for the project. Both of them are involved in the project. Five or seven people got up against the project. You have our petition in front of you. Eighty-some people voted, signed it against this project. Just because one person wants something doesn't mean it's good for all the residents in the area. We're the ones that are going to be impacted by the extra traffic, the constant noise, extra lighting, some more school buses being dropped off and on, holding up traffic. All the congestion on those areas in that corner can be terrible. There's an old saying, "You can't fight City Hall." Well, I'm not here to fight. I'm tired of fighting. I'm here to ask you guys to do the right thing. Vote in favor of the, your constituents, your, the people that are out there that live there now. Give a little, put some faith back into the city government for us. You know what I mean? Do the right thing. These people, we're the ones that are going to be impacted by all the problems and everything out there. Don't do this just for the money. Biloxi can't be that broke. Do we need the money that bad? Don't set the precedent that if you build it and bring in money, it's an automatic yes vote. That's not setting the right tone. You don't want people to come in here and have, build up your townhouses and everything right on the beach and everything. "Oh, I'm going to bring you a lot of money." It's not an automatic yes vote. Vote what you think is right and what's right is for the residents of this area. We have a nice, quiet area now. We don't need all the chaos.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Okay, that concludes citizen comments. We're going to move on to our policy agenda. Ordinance A, Lucy?
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for 43-acre tract from LB Limited Business and RS10 Low Density to PD TND Plan Development.
That was moved by Ms. Newman, second by Mr. Deming. Any questions, Ms. Newman? Any questions, Ms. Newman?
Jerry, I'm also confused because when the ordinance does say a zoning change, but then you stated last week that it was not a zoning change.
No, it's not a zoning change. And I'll explain again why. A zoning change, when you're voting on a zoning change, it has to be done based on one of the three criteria required by state law: changing the character of the neighborhood, mistaking the original zoning, or public need. Your decision has to be based on that. Once a zoning change is made, it does not expire. A PD master plan expires after two years if no action is taken. If it were a zoning change, that would be an acknowledgement that you had violated state law. So no, it is not a zoning change. It's an overlay district, and it clearly says that in the chart in the LDO. If you look under it, it says PD Overlay District.
And this is going to be a phased project, so basically, you want us to approve the concept, and they'll be starting on Phase 1, which is the single-family homes. Then he'll be putting in the turn lane at that same time.
That's correct.
And then if any issues arise with Phase 1, it has to... Phase 2 has to come back before the council, right?
If they make any major modifications, if they make minor modifications, like they're having to move this property line over some to avoid a wetland area, then that's the reason this is conceptual. There are some wetlands on here, and there may be some things environmentally that might cause them to have to shift a line one way or the other. Those do not have to come back. If they come back with something different than what's on the drawing, then they'll have to come back through Planning Commission and through City Council. If you'll remember, when the City Council voted to approve Hidden Springs, Hidden Springs started out as a conceptual drawing. This is what we had liked to do. But with each phase that they've come in with, they've had to come back and go through Planning Commission and go through City Council to show it, because that's where the actual property lines are. That's an actual plat. This is just a conceptual drawing. But the word conceptual, I think that it's misleading to say that that means that we can go in and make wholesale changes. It's a conceptual drawing only because at this point, the developer doesn't want to spend the money to go in and do the detailed civil drawings that are required until he at least knows that he has PD conceptual approval. Then he'll invest the money into doing the detailed drawings.
But anytime Phase 2 and 3 can be rejected, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's it for now.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence, do you have any questions?
Yeah, that's conceptual. You're talking about strictly property lines?
I'm sorry?
On a conceptual, you're saying that strictly... First thing they got to do is set up the property lines?
When they come back with Phase 1, when they come back with Phase 1, the property lines will all be spelled out. They'll have actual dimensions on each one to show us what it is, and then that would be filed. That plat would be filed.
That dictates that you can build on that property?
I mean, it's... The areas that they've designated as single-family will have to be single-family. If they came back in with a drawing that said, "Well, we've changed our mind. We're going to do commercial there now," that would have to come back to the Planning Commission and council because that's not what was approved at either the Planning Commission or the council for what they were proposing to do.
And the 600 feet they keep talking about, according to Mr. Salem himself, he said as long as the first 600 feet is residential.
Residential.
That was written in...
Yes, sir.
That 2024 law, there wasn't a lot of it between the two owners. So the first 600 feet will be nothing but 107, 109 homes. What is it roughly?
It's 107 homes overall. But there's only going to be so many that actually abut Saylor Drive. And then the others are going to be buffered over within...
Nothing else can be built within the 600 feet other than residential?
Residential, yes, sir.
All right. The bridge expansion, and you looked at that. How much land is the bridge going to take when it comes this way? On that side?
Yeah, Dennis did that. He went ahead and got the information about where the bridge is going to be located, where it's going to start. And it actually shows up on this drawing that we have over here, that this is the start of the bridge, and this is the area that's set aside for the bridge. And they purposely designed their project to be outside of that area where the bridge is going to come in.
So nothing to fringe on, say that 50, 60 feet, whatever it might be. All right. And if all the sewer... Father, I know there's not... The sewer out there is not to capacity. Everybody's worried about the sewers. I mean, that's the first thing I check, capacity of sewer.
Well, just like any other project, just like any other subdivision that came in, the sewer system is going to have to be designed as the project is designed. That's just the way subdivisions are done.
And they're all talking about the school. What is the school numbers out there?
Well, again, this is going to be a multi-year project, and schools adjust... I mean, they'll take whatever steps are necessary. We're probably looking at at least two years before any of these houses are occupied. Once they're built, they're going to move forward with Phase 1. They'll put in the infrastructure, which is going to take time. First of all, he's got probably another six months of designs to do. Then the infrastructure plans would have to be reviewed and approved by our engineer. Then they'd actually go in and put the infrastructure in, and only after all that infrastructure in and is approved by our engineering department can I issue any permits to build houses out there. So that would give the school system adequate time to adjust to whatever impacts may put on the schools.
Is the school system at capacity now?
Okay, the note I've been handed says that the West Biloxi Sewer Plant is at less than 50% capacity right now. So it appears that it's adequate to handle the sewer coming out of here.
I don't think we're close to that.
I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Lawrence, whether or not the schools are at capacity. I just don't know. I can check on that and find out.
They also said sometimes they can smell the sewer and stuff like that, so maybe we need to have to go check the smell. Maybe we've got a leak somewhere out there. If you're not to 50% capacity, it shouldn't be smelling.
The schools are not at capacity.
I'll be happy to answer the school questions for you.
What about the sewer plant? I talk to them on a regular. It stinks all the time, and as soon as I bring it up to them, they put more chemicals in, and it's adjusted. Okay.
What is the capacity of school in that area?
Yeah, the capacity is whatever the increase in student enrollment is. Okay, so let me give you an example. If somebody waved a wand in Pops Ferry, which probably has about 600 students, give or take, grades K to 4. If somebody waved a wand and 100 kids showed up there tomorrow, all of them in the fourth grade, you'd order trailers, you'd have them set probably within two or three weeks, and you'd have an indication of the increase by registration numbers, which occur typically around the middle of July, about three weeks before school starts. So schools expand as the student population expands.
So now you know that, Jerry?
I was going to say that.
You're learning something. And another thing that they all have a question about is the minor and major changes. So you're talking about the design of a building? Or you're talking about the design of what, like a house? The commercial buildings? What is the major and the minor difference? Would it be a major change to this project?
No, what I was talking about, the major and minor modifications, that has to do with the lines, the lines that have been placed on the design right now. If they come back in and there are major modifications, those lines, if they start trying to squeeze those lots down to meet like RS5 standards, 5,000 square foot, to me, that would be a major modification. Because what's being presented now is that these lots are backing up to those lots on Saylor Drive, and they're close in size to those. So if they came back in with something where the density was being increased, significantly increased, that would be a major modification. That would have to go back to Planning Commission and City Council.
Another question I was all concerned is, how do we inform them what's going on when these projects start? The people that come in and talk to the council, which we want them to do that, how do we keep in touch with them that they'll know it's going to start, it's not going to start? When it's going to start, what are you going to do?
Well, I mean, we do a permit report. That permit will go out. We do economic development report on Mondays, letting them know what big permits we've issued. So there's a way in the B-mail and other ways that this information will get out. If the council wants us to provide them with an update on what the status is, we can do that. We can handle that in a number of ways.
I know the B-mail is a good way to do it because everybody gets one of them, and Dixie probably responds, most of the people that's dealing with her. So I mean, that's what they need to know, exactly where we're at, what we're doing. And that's most of 90% of the question. Kind of let me know what you're doing.
Yeah, we'll be happy to do that, keep an update through B-mail.
Thank you.
Dr. Sessell?
And some of these questions were from last week. And for those who missed the questions, don't forget, these council meetings are recorded and online through the city's website. Couple of things, just in reading the text over the past couple of weeks. Phase 1 consists of 85 single-family residential lots and 26 townhouse lots.
Yes, sir.
Phase 2 consists of 60 condo units.
Yes, sir.
Phase 3 consists of 60 apartment slash condo units, including 70,000 square feet of retail office and food slash beverage outlets. But I think Mr. Stifel said last week, there aren't any apartments in this. It's all condos.
Yes, sir. Well, let me clarify that. Dennis came up to me after the meeting. When this went through DRC, actually, some staff members had approached him about considering putting apartments above some of the retail and residential in Phase 3, only in Phase 3 that faces Pops Ferry Road. Now, if there are apartments over there, they're going to be so far away from the single-family residential that's existing out there that it's going to have no impact on them. But they are considering it. They haven't made a decision. They are considering putting apartments in Phase 3.
Okay, Keith, do you mind if you could follow the link for this resolution? It's going to be, you need to scroll the other way. Keep going up. Right there, the second reading. And you see just above the word, the word, almost where your cursor is, down to the blue link there. Could you click on that link, please? If you would, scroll down. I think it's to page 16? It'll take a moment to load. I think it's 52 pages. I just want to understand what the current zoning is and what the, on the conceptual plan development, what the zoning would look like, just to be sure that I understand it clearly. Do we have any elevator music till it loads?
Crickets.
I will make another observation or two, and that is, considering school-aged children, elementary, they would be in the Pops Ferry zone. They live close enough, they have buses. Unless the school district wants to provide buses, those students would live close enough to the school where busing is likely not to be even considered. Also, that sewage plant has been there, I don't know, 40 years, I'm guessing. And periodically, periodically, frequently, sometimes intermittently, you've always had some sort of smell.
Yes, sir.
So that is nothing new. Okay. So right here in the dark shaded lots, that's what would be what is now LB that would be conceptually, at the appropriate time, rezoned as NB?
No, sir. Actually, the underlying zoning has no impact on the project above. As a matter of fact, the Land Development Ordinance says that where there's a conflict between the overlay district and the underlying zoning, that the overlay district takes precedent.
Right. So right now, this is the... But this is the current zoning, and the dark portion is...
LB.
Limited business.
Yes, sir.
And everything else, I think, generally is residential.
Yes, sir.
Correct? And Dennis, I know you're in the back somewhere. Just if you would, on your phone, on your calculator, with the amount of land, the acreage available, and do the what-if thing, how many RS10 lots could you put on there? Given your... Just a rough figure. And you don't have to give me an answer now. I have a few questions. So you have some... It's like Jeopardy. You have a little... No pun intended, but you have a little time to think about it. Okay. Two big factors seem to be, to me, Atkinson Road, the traffic and the flow and the load and so forth, and then where the bridge is going to come across and down to ground level on Pops Ferry, which would... Where the entrance to La Bonterre and the west... Excuse me, yeah, the west entrance to the Bertuzzi property creates an intersection there. But the incline of the bridge comes down that you could still... You would still be able to cross at that intersection, but it would be below the bridge. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what that means is, is traffic coming north, approaching the south, comes down the bridge, they're at ground level. If they want to go to La Bonterre, they take a right. If they want to go to the Bertuzzi property, or Saylor Drive for that matter, they go to the left. For folks who want to leave La Bonterre, they have to go all the way down to Old Bay Road. I think it's Chablis Lane, which is now a three-way stop to leave. Or they could go east, under the bridge, around through the Bertuzzi property, make a loop, which adds to some of the issues associated with Atkinson Road.
Yes, sir.
All right. So if Bertuzzi is going to donate land for a turning lane, where would that lane start roughly with the drawing up here? You see, Atkinson is on the left side, running top to bottom. About where would the property be that's being donated for a turning lane?
Well, he would only be able to donate property that he actually has control of. So depending on where the traffic study shows that a new lane needs to start, or a turning lane needs to start, that's going to determine how far that direction it would go.
Based on the traffic count? Now, and I'd asked Mr. Stifel, and Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong. I think you said on Atkinson, you see that there's currently one intersection there up by the LC, the dark shaded area, which currently goes to Tri-County Optics. So between Saylor Drive and the dark shaded portion, you would have one or two entrances, ingress egress there?
Two.
That be... Did I understand you correctly? Okay. And while we're doing that, the only point I'm trying to make is it's at some point, given, I guess, the traffic count determining where the traffic lane is, because for much of the time, the traffic is not that bad during working hours.
That's correct.
It's when business is over, the VA opens, we get a flood of traffic. We have people trying to beat the lights there at Pops Ferry and Pass Road that turn by Fatima. I mean, that's a big issue right now throughout the city, is all these shortcuts. And so the point is made to me that infrastructure is a big consideration. And if you're going to resolve to everybody's satisfaction the Atkinson Road issue, I'm thinking you'd probably have to expand that to three, at least three lanes, and probably four.
Yes, sir. That's what we discussed.
And I'm thinking of that, maybe you get a match from MDOT, but you're... I guess, does MDOT do those residential-type road projects?
We'd have to check to see if it qualified for MDOT.
So anyway, with any luck, we'd still be putting up probably a local match at 20%, which is standard.
Yes, sir.
So if that road costs $20 million, we've got to come up with $4 million if that were to happen, and then it's several years in the making. Okay. Phase 1 consisted of, I think, all the residential housing?
The single-family, yes, sir.
Single-family, and that's pretty much... Keith, if you'll scroll down one page, you'll see, I guess, a site plan, I guess. Like, I know what I'm talking about, but I think I don't. But I think that's a site plan. So everything, the little boxes, that's the, whatever it is, 121 or 120 units right in that area. Is that... All of that constitutes Phase 1?
The... I believe that matches up with the line that's on the larger drawing.
Which, and that area right now is currently zoned...
RS10.
RS10. So that is zoned appropriately, appropriately. Mr. Bertuzzi, if he wanted to start building houses tomorrow, doesn't have to get an okay from anybody other than follow the process, and he's good to go, correct?
Well, what he'd have to do, if he decided to do that, he would have to come in and go before the DRC Planning Commission and the council with an actual subdivision plat.
Exactly.
That has all the lands on it.
Then he comes to the council.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. So he could follow that process and do that tomorrow, and we wouldn't even be here today. There wouldn't be a hearing, not a ripple.
Nothing about zoning or anything like that.
Now, phase two, and Dennis, if you would, you may need the pointer, or Keith will let you drive, you may want to point out what constitutes phase two on, on that site plan. If you can, or do the best you can. You're the expert on this. I'm just trying to understand it. Okay. Yeah. Okay. So that's all phase one? And everything in phase one could now be done?
Yes, it could be.
No questions asked, just followed, it's a routine procedure, no hearings, nothing? Okay. Where's phase two? Okay. Okay. And could that be done right now, without any rezoning or anything?
No, it's zoned, single-family.
Single-family. So that would have to be rezoned?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And phase three, then, which generally I'd say is just the commercial end of this? Okay. So rather than, rather than do phase one first, could you do phase two and, or phase three first, and save phase one till the end? And the reason I ask that is that if somehow funding were found to restructure Atkinson Road, and if it was a year, or two, or three down the road, we might better have some idea of what our timetable on the Pops Ferry Bridge, the new, quote-unquote, "new" conceptual bridge, that we've been working on, two councils before us, Georgia's the only one that remembers it, coming up. And it may be a number of years before we move forward, or it could be, because as I understand it, we're acquiring property, correct, Mr. Mayor, right now? So things are moving forward on the city end, and these things have to occur, and other agencies are involved. But if that were the case, if phase, bless you, if phase two were done first, followed by phase three, and then phase one, what I don't know is, does that make fiscal sense to the developer who's investing his money into this project?
It might, and Dennis, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but I believe that he already has the funding approved for phase one.
Okay. But, but my question is, could he get, is there anything to prohibit, or what makes phase two and phase three, phase two and phase three? Why not, what I'm thinking is, why not do, again, phase two, make it phase one, phase three, make it phase two?
Well, it, I wish it were that simple. But when you go to a lending institution to get approval, and you present a project to them, and this is going to be phase one, he's going to have to go back to that lending institution and convince them that phase two is viable. So he's essentially going to have to start over with his financial requests.
Typically, how long does it take to get financial backing, what you described?
I've had people that it's taken years to get financial approval. It just depends on what's going, and I've had people that have gotten approval very quickly. I just, I don't know enough about that aspect of it, and what all is involved.
Okay. Mr. Stifel, any comment along those lines? I mean? Understand. But, but basically, it makes more fiscal sense to do that, that's more likely to move and generate money to move forward with the project? Thank, thank you, Dennis. Jerry, what's the difference? Because it's currently zoned, the commercial portions of this currently zoned, limited, and if you move to a neighborhood business, what's the difference in the business types?
Limit, limited business traditionally is professional, commercial, like office spaces and, and engineering firms and those kind of things, maybe lawyers and dentistry, that kind of thing. Neighborhood business is just, is just that. It would be more, and I don't know what they've got planned for it, but I'm just telling you what would normally, normally be involved. Support businesses for neighborhoods, like drugstores and restaurants and retail and those kind of things, that people actually could walk to, to get what they need, and then walk back home.
Question. Because it occurs to me, Dennis, you might want to weigh in with an opinion here. Why doesn't Mr. Bertuzzi go ahead and build phase one? And then come back to rezone for phase two and phase three? In other words, not even have a plan development or an overlay? I mean, if he can go ahead and build and generate the single-family residential now, without, without following this process, process, why not do that and then come back later to ask to have that rezoned? What's, in other words, what's the advantage of doing this, or six and one and half a dozen of the other?
Well, I can, I can answer that question. If you, if you decide that you're just going to do a straight zoning change, then you have to come in and prove that there's been a change in the character of the neighborhood, a mistake in the original zoning, or a public need. The whole purpose of doing APD is to answer all of those questions and to be able to move forward with the development, you know, within certain guidelines. The, this is what PDs were designed for, is for this type of project, a mixed-use project, all on the same piece of property. I would, I would think that the, the best way to approach this is the way that they've actually designed it, because you're going to be building the houses that are actually going to wind up serving as the buffer between the existing residential and the commercial that's going to be built over on Pops Ferry Road. So, you know, I told you last week that we call it transitional zoning, or stair-step zoning, and this is what you do. You start with the least intrusive, which is the residential, and then you stair-step up to the most intensive, which would be the commercial on Pops Ferry Road.
Right. The next thing is, given, given the traffic concerns, until phase one is constructed, and then, over the years, as phase two comes up and proceeds, is there any reason why the ingress and egress to those construction sites can't be limited just to Pops Ferry Road, coming in and out? And, and during that construction period, there is little, if any, or no, construction-related traffic on Atkinson Road?
You could actually make that a part of the PD approval. This is a, this is another reason why approving a PD is different from approving a zoning change. If you approved a zoning change, and then you tried to put conditions on it, that's considered contract zoning, and that's illegal.
Right.
But with APD, you can actually add those type of stipulations to the approval, that all construction traffic would have to come out on the Pops Ferry Road.
Dennis, you think that's possible, on the, on the development side, to limit your traffic in and out during construction, just to Pops Ferry? Right. Right. Keith, could you point out those two other proposed entrances? That's the intersection, come, all right, Dennis, if you don't mind driving. Correct. Right. Right.
And this is a proposed new entrance, a few hundred feet east. And there's a second main entrance, a few hundred feet east of that entrance. And this is the Sailor Drive.
Sailor Drive, okay.
Existing entrance, Sailor Drive subdivision.
Right. So if, if those two other proposed entrances on Atkinson, that, that, they don't exist now, do they?
Correct.
If, if they weren't made navigable, if you will, until phase one is developed, and phase two for that matter, and were restricted to, literally, to not even be on Atkinson Road at all, and just say, come in the Pops Ferry entrance, enter and exit there? It, does, does that cause you any concern? Is that doable? Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I would, just, just a knee-jerk reaction. The, the only way in and out of the subdivision, then, would be conceivably, possibly through an entrance here. And, and I think that would cause a big problem, you know, for people, for everybody trying to come in and out of the subdivision from this entrance right here. I think that would cause a logjam on Pops Ferry Road. You know, right now, you've got traffic issues on Pops Ferry and Atkinson. That would compound problems on Pops Ferry.
Well, and, and the thought is, you, you can manipulate that traffic light there to some extent. It isn't going to make people happy. And it may be that, that new bridge, at some point, well, you can no longer use that for ingress and egress.
Yeah.
But at least, you know, the bridge at that point is, it's here, it's coming, we got to do this. But if nothing else, for three or four, when do you anticipate getting to phase two or three? Any idea?
It, it depends on the demand. It depends on the, the, the market for multi-
I'm thinking maybe from today, maybe three or four years?
Probably within three or four years, yes.
So I mean, if you were looking at three or four years out, any traffic coming in and out would enter and exit through Pops Ferry? Or it may be that the, the current existing entrance and exit for those residents in the new homes, at the, at the existing Pops, excuse me, Atkinson Road intersection. I mean, they pull out, and they're almost right there at the light. But, I mean, if, if something could be phased in that manner, I, I think I could live with this. But right now, I really have concerns about all the traffic that's going to be lumbering up and down Atkinson Road. And that's nobody's fault. That's the way it is. It'd been great if we four-lane this thing years ago, but the city doesn't have the money, and I don't know when we will have the money. That's for the administration to work out and, and kind of let us know what the plans are, what they're looking at. I don't, I don't know that I have any other questions at this point. I don't, Dennis, I don't know if you have another comment to make, but?
No, other than the fact that the, the more, the more points of ingress and egress you have into a subdivision or a development like this, that people are going to find the path of least resistance. So, so what, the, the idea is to provide as many points of ingress and egress as you can, and, and traffic will find its way to the path of least resistance. You'll have, you'll have, you know, if you've got a logjam at one intersection, folk, folks are going to divert, as they're already doing up and down Atkinson Road to another, another intersection.
Right. And that's kind of part of the problem we face now, on both sides of Pops Ferry Road, because the Pops Ferry pass, pass, Pass Road intersection is just murder in the afternoon. But anyway, I'm, I'm done. Thank you. Thank everybody for being patient. I'm sorry, I had a lot of questions.
Mr. Glavine? I'll keep it relatively short. And Paul, no, that's good, good to be comprehensive on something like this. All right, so these plans, the, the single-family homes, is that a gated community? Is that a gated, single-family?
No.
It's easy, it's just in and out?
No, there's been no discussion about it being gated, no.
Okay. So there's no-
Other than, other than the gates with the knock boxes that face the Sailor subdivision.
Okay. The other question, as it relates going from phase one to phase two, could phase two be modified for additional single-family homes? If you find there's demand in the market, and all of a sudden you have that available property, it could be expanded just to, instead of going with the original plan in phase two, you can say, hey, we need more single-family homes? That could happen, correct? Dennis? That could, that could be part of the plan, just depending on market conditions and everything? Okay. The other thing, so if I understand the conversation today, we have phase one, single-family homes, already approved, current zoning. Phase two, does that have to come back to council for approval? As it exists, if there's no major modifications to the lines or whatever, does that have to come back to us for approval?
Yes.
It has to, no matter what. Okay. I, you know, I look at the project, and, and I'm listening to the residents, and of course, I listen to the council person that represents this ward, which always carries, you know, some, some weight. And it looks well thought out, and, and I understand, I'm looking at the residents that seem to be affected the most. Phase one, which it butts up to them, is single-family homes predominantly.
Yes, sir.
And it, it seems like phase two, phase three is moving toward, you know, the thoroughfares, where you do have commercial. And I, I'd have to, you know, based on all that right now, I'd have to say I'm in favor of it. I have no other, no other questions or comments.
I'll thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I just have a couple of comments. I think all the questions have been answered. I understand the fear, anytime one of these subdivisions comes in and brings a proposal forward in an area that's been undeveloped for many years, but more times, and it's usually a lot more times than not, those fears don't come to fruition. Because, especially in Biloxi, we have a code department, planning department, that is very vigilant in making sure that these things are taken care of, that the developer does what they're going to say they're going to do. And in my, my area, I have a lot of subdivisions that come in. And I can say without fail that when an issue arises, and a developer doesn't follow what they were supposed to, it is dealt with and it is taken care of. And so more times, and I'm not saying that those fears never happen, but for the most part, the developments go well, because we live in a very progressive city that takes care of their business the way that they should, and holds the developers to what they say they're going to do. Secondly, I've been to the planning commission meetings, I've heard the, the comments of the citizens, as well as my fellow council members, and the one thing that continues to come up is the traffic issue. And I understand that there is a traffic issue there. I drive through this city every day. And in the mornings, regardless of where you're at, if you're not out in Wool Market, you're going to run into a traffic issue. And in the evenings, between maybe four and six o'clock, you're going to run into some traffic issues. And from the flip side of things, I see that not as a terrible issue, I see that as a good thing. If I were to drive through the city and there's never any traffic on the road, that would cause, cause me to say, hey, we're in a city that's going backwards, not going forward. And I would be willing to bet that you can go to any progressive, growing, successful city in the United States, and during those times, when everybody in the city is going to and coming home from work, you're going to have some traffic issues. And so as the city grows, even as the roads are modified, we're going to continue to have traffic issues. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. I would say that's showing that we're going in the right direction. And thirdly, I would like to say that out in my, my area, I have dealt with Mr. Stifel on multiple occasions. He's probably- He's probably built eighty percent of the subdivisions, or developed, designed eighty percent of the subdivisions that are in Ward Seven. And without fail, Mr. Stifle has always been a man of his word. If he said he's going to do something, he does it. And if there has been an issue that's came up, I've been able to pick up the phone and call Mr. Stifle. And he has dealt with the issue, not over a long period of time, but immediately. So I would like to give those in the audience assurance that if an issue does arise and something is off kilter a little bit, that you can pick up the phone and call Mr. Stifle, and he'll, he will take care of those things. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Dr. Tsizel, you have one more.
Excuse me. Dennis, I'd ask you to whip out that calculator on the, do you, do you have, this is forty-three acres, but some of it's already developed, right? So how many RS-ten homes could you put on that site roughly? Do you think if it was nothing but RS-ten, lots? Okay. As the applicant on behalf of the, the owner, the developer, if you will, can you commit to, for Phase One, using only ingress and egress from Pops Ferry Road? Are you able to do that? Or, or can that be done during, when they come back for Phase One through the planning commission? But I, I would, and I could suppose, I could support this wholeheartedly if you can do that, at least for Phase One. But if not, I, I don't know that I can support it. Yeah, not to omit them entirely, just during the Phase One construction. Because I'm thinking if it took two or three years or four years to build out Phase One, and, and the ingress and egress is through Pops Ferry, then that keeps a lot of the traffic off of Atkinson Road. And the construction traffic, I'm just thinking, that's just a- Just think if we could keep them off Atkinson Road. It's not a fancy road, it's not curbed, it's not really improved, it's just a road. I worry about the deterioration of the rest.
That's true, but let me just point out that, you know, we may have construction going on there. We may have the widening of the road going on at that time, so there might possibly be some construction improvements being made on Atkinson Road.
Did I hear you say the widening of Atkinson Road?
Well, I mean, you know.
Okay. All right, I don't know, okay. That concludes my comments. Those are my thoughts. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Jerry.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Newman, I think you had some parting, huh? You have something else to say?
Yeah, and as PD plan, does conditional use go with that?
Conditional use?
Yeah. That changes a lot of things, you know?
Well, when the, when the conceptual design is approved, and the PD is approved, then uses that are normally allowed in NB and LB would be allowed in the master plan. Now, if they tried to get into something like tourism related, or, or RB zoning, CB or RB type zoning issues, then we would probably bring that to the planning commission and the council as a, a conditional use in there. If it's, I guess what I'm saying is, if it's something that's so far outside the scope of what this thing was intended to be, then, then yes, we would bring it before the planning commission and the council to address that.
You had a lot of questions going back and forth. So is Phase One going to be completed before you do anything else?
Yes, sir. That's, that's what I've heard.
Okay, so Phase One will be completed before you move on?
Yes, sir.
And a lot of these projects like this, in the past, we used to put like two years on them, if nothing done in two years, or eighteen months, and the, that the project died and reversed back to the original land.
Well, that's what the Land Development Ordinance says. If you get a PD approved and you don't do anything within two years, then it expires.
How many months is it?
I'm sorry?
How many? Twenty-four months, two years?
Twenty-four months from the date of approval, unless they come back and ask for an extension, for obvious reasons. But the LDO charges me with going back to bring it to you to have the PD removed. That's what it says.
And once you do that, it goes back to the what, the land?
Yes, sir. It goes back to the underlying zoning.
That needs to be in all these projects, you know, because a lot of them don't, don't go anywhere, they take too long to do anything, or they can't get financing, they can't get financing, and they're building anything anyway.
Yes, sir. Now, it's, it's possible that they may be going through the design phase of, of Phase Two while there's still construction going on in Phase One. I mean, just kind of going through the motions and everything, but my understanding is that Phase One would be completed before Phase Two starts construction.
I'm like Paul with the, the road, and need to have some option for the road to eliminate all the traffic on, in the main roads right now. I mean, I thought he probably could do that. But I mean, that's, that's the key. That way that would be to take some, like the steam, comes in a little hole, some of the pressure off the people that live in the neighborhood. I just think that's something that should be done. I hope he can do that. I'm like Paul, I mean, that's some of the main things that, the sewer, I knew the sewer was, no problem. If there's a stinking problem, then we're not doing something right. The mayor's got to get out there and check that out. But I mean, that's just, that was my thing, there's too much traffic right now. But if our development is, it's hard to stop our development because you want to grow to the city. That's why I asked about the schools, because we down five thousand people from Katrina. So I mean, that's just, that's a lot, schools, those close to schools, they, a lot of people in the school system. So I mean, it just happens. You're trying to get the city to grow, get, get them back before Katrina, it'd be fifty thousand, five hundred people here. But we lost almost six thousand people. What's on? I can't.
Yeah, but Mr. Lawrence, the school enrollment, I'm proud to say, is now a little bit higher than it was pre-Katrina.
That's good.
Thank you.
Glad to go into school.
I think most of my questions was answered during Dr. Tsizel's workshop earlier. So Phase One, Phase One, we're approving the concept. And Phase One could be done without approval. And the detailed drawings, we would have to approve and it comes back before the council.
We'll bring those back to you. It may be on the consent agenda, but those will be brought back to you.
For Phase Two. Okay. That's all I have.
Did I, did I hear something a little, little different?
Another workshop?
Possibly, you know, we all learn different things at different rates. So what we're approving today is just the conceptual plan.
Yes, sir. The PD.
When, when Phase One, when Phase One will come before us again for approval. So we're not approving Phase One, we're just approves, approving this concept, which if nothing's done in two years, reverts to its current status, whatever that zoning is.
Yes, we don't even have the, the information to present to you on Phase One yet. By this approval, what you're doing is you're acknowledging to the developer, we approve the overall, you can go back now and do the detailed plans and those will come back.
Okay, the state rests.
Okay, we're gonna, Ms. Newman, you can have the parting words, and we're gonna go ahead and vote on it.
Okay, yes, I would like to make sure that we approve this contingent on the concerns that the constituents had, which is the lockable gate, which would be the cut-through road, no access to Sailor subdivision. They want an eight-foot fence, buffer fence, and a green space between Sailor and the new subdivision. And upon approving of the developer being able to, being able to give the city enough easement. So if they have the survey and it's not enough, whatever changes in that, I think should also come before us. That way we're in the know of what's going on with how much we're going to be able to get and going forward. So other than that.
All right, thank you. Thank, thank you, Ms. Correille.
I have another comment, though, because what I heard was a Knox box on what would be-
The connector to-
Bonneville, and, and I had asked about whether you would even need to cut that road at all, just if you didn't cut that road. Is that still a possib, is that still doable, I think?
He, he's expressed a willingness to do that, but we would like to talk to police and fire and-
Okay. And that could, that could come up when Phase One comes before the planning commission, right? I mean, I'm just thinking if you don't need that road there, if it serves no purpose, and everybody's, both, the Sailor residents and the developers say, "Yeah, we can do without that road there," then, you know, it's one of those kumbaya moments where there aren't a whole lot of kumbaya moments. So, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call for the question. All in favor? Okay. Six zero, motion carried. Going, I need a motion on the consent agenda?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. I'm gonna start with Mr. Barrett.
I have one question on, um, M. Can you explain what that twenty thousand dollars is for being moved from the general fund to the executive department? I can't hear you. It's too short.
That's a transfer of twenty thousand dollars out of the general fund into the executive budget for travel, because we don't have any more travel money. We have a mayor, unlike the last mayor, who stayed home. We have a mayor that's out there, out there beating the, beating the path in DC, doing things, and this is up to his third trip to DC this year, and we're out of money.
Okay, all right, so.
I think at the same time, these, these two events, of course, the spillway, we're meeting with the actually head of the Corps of Engineers at the White House tomorrow at three forty-five. And then all of our, I've sent both of our senators, as well as Palazzo, and regarding our OIG, FEMA, MIMA, interaction, along with the lobbyists, to get a handle on our second appeal. And anybody who else will listen to us there. So I mean, it's something, I think the latter part of the travel budget would be the conference for mayors, which would be at the end of June. I'm not gonna tell you where it is.
Thank you.
The twenty thousand, is for one person?
No, it's just for what do we need to finish the year? Actually Cliff Kirkland will be attending this meeting with us tomorrow.
I don't mind sending you somewhere, I mean, we don't, who's gonna go with you, another lawyer?
No, just Cliff tomorrow. Okay. That's what we need to finish the, the whole year with, I think.
I'll send you, that's about, how much it costs to send you? That's all we need. Not, not going.
Anything else, Mr. Barrett? Okay, Ms. Glavine?
I, I just want to comment on Councilman Gons introducing Resolution C. We've done, it's customary that we've given a discretionary holiday with or without the governor's declaration, and I just think it's the right thing. So, thank you, Mr. Gons, for introducing that.
Thank you. And Dr. Tsizel?
Yes, on, on item C, my concerns there, I think this was last before us, about 2017, and we tabled it, and by state statute, I think we're allotted, Mr. Aby, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're allotted ten holidays, and we can substitute one or two. And then the, the governor, I think in the statute, it says if the governor declares a discretionary holiday, we, we can follow along. My, my question is, if we, and I think we have, what, twelve holidays now? So my question is, are we lawfully permitted to pay employees for days they don't work? For example, if the state says you got ten days and you can substitute one or two, which we do, Mardi Gras, for example, but we're still two days over those holidays which aren't permitted by statute, can we lawfully pay those employees so that we give two days off to that we're paying them for? Can we lawfully do that? Another, I guess another perspective is, can we expect a demand letter from the state auditor at some point, perhaps, or not, or?
Well, last year, I mean, our ordinance says we've added, we have the, like, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve as sort of additional holidays that the state statute doesn't allow. I think we've been maybe fortunate, the last two years, the governor has still declared those discretionary, and we've, we've been able to fall into that. So I don't think we've technically had any extra holidays that we could be, you know, in jeopardy over. But it is something, I think we looked at it in 2017, and we wanted to make it align with the statute. And when the governor declares these discretionary holidays, we give the council the right to declare those, which would, which would still give everybody the same number of holidays as other cities and keep us under the statute. So in looking at this coming up, July third, the governor's declared it, the council has a right to declare it, but we would like to, and I think we're gonna probably reintroduce that next week, the, the prior resolution where we tried to get things in line with the statute, we're gonna try to get that, put that on for next week.
Okay, and then that calendar's already in effect with holidays, and the governor's declared July fifth a discretionary holiday, which we can lawfully do. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with this resolution.
We're not really, you know, we're sort of, we're hitting the same holidays, but our ordinance book actually has twelve holidays, which, which could, could put us in some hot water down the road.
It just bears more examination, I guess. The other item, I was hoping Christie would be here, but I don't see her. This deals with the length, the contract on the Sixth Street South project, and I'm thinking liquidated damages, Walter, I, I looked for that, and Christie said they'd be in the specifications. And I'm, I'm wondering, is that, those liquidated damages gonna be about what they are now with, with Oscarinda?
Yes, sir. I'll have it exactly, I'll take around fifteen hundred dollars. So, more than eighty bucks.
Okay.
That's a hundred dollars.
All right. If you don't, if you would just, you can email me later. No biggie, I appreciate that, I was just curious about that. I'm done, thank you.
Ms. Newman? And George?
Yeah, uh, on that E, they have a change of thirty-four thousand dollars repaired seawall. I thought when they bid it, that's what they're supposed to be doing. So why add thirty-four thousand to it? I mean, that was supposed to be with the contract, that's a two million dollar contract.
Right, and as the contract was executed, we got some sinkholes that arrived, that just produced themselves, you know, along the back of the seawall. And when that was investigated, we saw that there were actually holes in the, in the seawall that were allowing water in. So we, we've contracted with, we are contracting, proposing a contract with a vendor that's gonna be able to close those holes up and backfill, puts, if you will, stabilize the soil so that the seawall won't have the sinkholes behind it in the future. It's a small contract that's being added to the east, east-
I guess my thing, I could, I mean, you're paying somebody two million dollars and they don't see what's going on? What are they looking at?
Well, yeah.
I mean, it's not that big of a deal, thirty-seven thousand, but it's still, they're paying them two million dollars, and all of a sudden, "Oh, we got sinkholes in the seawall." They should have did that when they first looked at it. And I just, that's my biggest gripe with it. That's all.
I'm not gonna argue.
And, uh, there was, I think another one, G, on the pitch point investment, you extended the date, and you had to pick Katrina, August the twenty-ninth? You couldn't pick the better date than that? You could have did something different, August the twenty-ninth. And now we're working on the Bayview thing, the two point nine million, I hope we get that. I mean, that's, that's good, to redo the whole Bayview. And there's another one, J, where we're getting Beverlymore, I guess supervisors to help with air condition. I, I think we don't use the supervisors enough. I brought some information to vote for them, and we, we give them thirty-six point-two-three mills a year of city money.
Mm-hmm.
And you give the school system forty-three mill. And who gets the least amount? The city. I mean, that's a ton of money that we giving to them, you know? So, I mean, it's just time, but any time we can use them, I don't care what, one, two, three, it doesn't matter. That's our money, that's our taxpayers' money. You know, we don't ask them, they're not gonna do anything. And most of the time, in a case like with Beverly Morton, she'll, she'll help you. But if we don't ask them...
Yeah, they, they did approve the third increment of the, of the full mill, and they approved three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand this past Monday, uh, to go to the city and to improve the port projects. So, we're... Some of it is trading money, but we're, we're working on it.
Well, we roughly give them twenty-two million a year. That's a lot of money. If you drop five or six mills off, or you can get about four, five million back to us, that'd be strong for our budgets, you know? But I know that's a state law. I don't know who changed that, anybody up there looking at that? 'Cause the county has shrunk. I mean, it's just, it's everything is almost cities now. Right.
One of these incorporated areas. So, and the value and the growth and the such value are in the incorporated areas, so therefore, that, that village, thirty-six mills generates more and more for, and doing less and less. That's another argument, I mean, that's another, another case we need to go down.
All right, that's it.
All right, thank you, and I have nothing else. Okay, I'm gonna call for the question. All in favor? Okay, five-zero. Note that Mr. Barrett is out.
Yep.
And motion carries. Uh, any abstain as see, uh, Mr. Lawrence voting against him? Ms. Newman, you have any objection? Dr. Tisdale? Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to routine agenda? No, code enforcement. Mr. Creel.
Yeah, George, George abstained from him. Marv voted against it. He voted against it.
I guess.
The first case on the agenda, Item A, Chow Min Lee, seventeen-oh-three Ridgeway Drive. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Chow Ming Lee? Anyone here to speak on behalf of Chow Ming Lee? Consider that clause.
Item B on the agenda, Gan Van Nguyen, one-three-oh-five-two Hudson Crown Road, that case has been resolved. Item C on the agenda, South Mississippi AIDS Task Force, twenty-seven-fifty-six Fernwood Road, this property's still in violation.
Mr. Creel, do we, do we have a contact person for that organization? I thought I had a number and a name, but they no longer work for the...
Right. And the, the building is vacant. We're trying to, uh, just get the grass cut.
Right. Okay, um, I know a guy who called me a while back, Mr. Alan Jenkins, who, uh, ran it. Did anyone try to reach him?
We showed that the, uh, the certified letter came back, uh, unsigned, returned to sender, 'cause no one was at the building. I don't see a contact, a specific contact name in here. All the correspondence was sent to the AIDS Task Force.
Okay. Could I take thirty days to see if I can contact them?
Sure.
I'll, I'll make a motion for thirty days.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Okay. Five, six-zero. Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Creel. I need a motion on routine agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Tisdale.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any questions? George?
Yeah, well, how much money we have? Walt, you were, you was gone last week, you was on vacation. Seven hundred and thirty. All right, appreciate that.
All right, with no other concern, all in favor? Six-zero, motion carry. I need a motion to...
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Tisdale. Anyone want a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. All in favor? Six-zero.